I wanted to certainly introduce myself. I am Assistant City Administrator Latonya Simmons. I will serve as co-facilitator of the first portion of today's high-level presentation covering the coordinated efforts of the identified departments. Also, Assistant City Administrator Lake will also serve as co-navigator for the second portion of the presentation for the cohort of departments under her portfolio. The presentations that you will be giving today are structured to define each department, the objectives of the department's duties as defined by the characteristics of the city of Oakland, and to provide also the opportunity to acquaint you with the department's leadership. This discussion will demonstrate how the department works, intersects with the others here with respect to housing development and homelessness response. Now, with that, I want to make sure that Latonya is connected. Latonya, are you able to put your screen up? Thank you so very much. And we will begin today's presentation with our interim director of Housing and Community Development, Christina Moon, and she will introduce herself and her team. Christina?
Thank you so much, City Administrator Latonya Simmons. My name is Christina Moon. I am the interim director of Housing and Community Development. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm so happy to be here to meet with you all and present the work of our agency. I'm joined by my colleagues Emily Weinstein, who is Deputy Director of Community Development for our team, as well as Chris Norman, who is Assistant to the Director of HCD. Next slide, please. So just to give you a brief overview of where we're headed for this presentation, I'm going to give an overview of our structure and services. Sorry, next, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. There we go. Thank you so much. Yep, so I'm going to go over our structure and services and our mission, and then I'm going to pass it to Chris to highlight some of our key activities and performance indicators. And lastly, we'll pass it to Emily to give a look ahead of what our priorities are in the next year and beyond, as well as information on how to reach us and access our services. Next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. I want to take a moment to just read our mission and ground us in what we're trying to do. So the Housing and Community Development Department, also known as HCD, is dedicated to improving Oakland's neighborhoods and to ensuring all Oaklanders have safe and affordable housing. Next slide. To that end, we are deeply committed to advancing racial equity in all of our policies and programs and procedures. We do this by disaggregating our data, targeting resources to those who are most vulnerable, and identifying and removing barriers to housing access wherever we can. Next slide. Next, I'll get into how we're structured and what services we provide. Next slide, please. So HCD centers our work around what you may have heard called the three Ps. And the three Ps are protection, so how we protect Oaklanders from displacement, preservation, and how, that means how we preserve the existing affordable housing stock, and production, which is how we produce as much affordable housing as possible. And we do this through the six units that you can see listed on the right. I'm going to now provide a brief overview of each unit. Next slide, please. So first, under protection is the Rent Adjustment Program. You may have heard this unit called RAP. The RAP unit enforces our city's rent adjustment and just cause for eviction ordinances. We do this through pursuing an active enforcement model, which is comprised of community engagement and education, providing outreach, housing counseling, education to Oakland's tenants and property owners. Next, the Hearings Unit enforces rent control for RAP-covered units and the Rent Registry and Eviction Tracking Team. RAP also administers and staffs the Housing Residential Rent and Relocation Board, a quasi-judicial body comprised of members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. Next slide. Under preservation, our Community Development and Engagement Unit acts as a program administrator and grant manager for many of our federal funds, including CDBG, Home, and other HUD resources. These funds are intended to rebuild and improve access to life-enhancing services for Oaklanders and target those benefits to low- and moderate-income residents of the city. The CDE Unit reports to council annually through its Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or KAPER, and through the Five-Year Consolidated Plan, or the CON Plan. So you will be seeing this unit at least twice a year when we present those plans and reports. Next slide. Also under preservation is residential lending services. This unit administers loan and grant programs for the major and minor repair of and rehab of owner-occupied and rental housing. These programs include accessibility improvements for people with physical disabilities, remediating lead-based paint, emergency home repairs, and more. This unit also oversees our Pilot ADU Loan Program, as well as our Seismic Retrofit Program. All residents served through this unit are low and moderate income, most of whom are Black and Latinx seniors that are able to remain in their homes through these services. And you can see in the right an example of their amazing work in a home recently. Next slide. Under production, we have the Housing Development Services Unit. We call them HDS. They invest in the development and preservation of affordable housing in Oakland. They do this by funding the acquisition, development, and rehab of housing, coupled with long-term affordability restrictions, as well as investing in affordable homeownership when possible. HDS administers these funds through three core recurring notices of funding availability, also called NOFA's. Just as an aside, we have a lot of acronyms, so please call me out if there's too many, but I'm happy to explain any of them as we go forward. But these NOFA's include new construction, acquisition and conversion to affordable housing, and preservation and rehab. These NOFA funds are comprised largely of impact fees, former redevelopment boomerang funds, our city's home allocation, which I mentioned earlier, as well as some other sources like loan repayments. We competitively issue them through the NOFA and make recommendations for new construction and rehab projects. And we bring them to council for approval, so you will see us come before you for recommendations for funding for projects. This is also the unit that will be administering Measure U funds, which allocates $350 million for the creation of affordable housing. And we anticipate issuing these funds through this type of NOFA process. Measure U will be discussed further by my colleague Emily in more detail later in the presentation. HDS is also the unit that administers our Home Key efforts. Most recently, we have a RFP, a Request for Proposals, that went out to solicit more projects to submit to the Competitive State Home Key Program. You may have heard of this. The city was a leader in this effort to secure competitive state funds to rapidly expand housing for people experiencing homelessness. And HDS staff also asset monitors a portfolio of 134 affordable housing properties, comprising nearly 6,500 restricted affordable units. And overall, HDS has a current pipeline of approximately 60 projects in various stages of early pre-dev, new construction, comprised of over 3,500 affordable units. Next slide. The Admin Unit includes fiscal services. This fiscal unit ensures agency-wide financial transparency and integrity by providing quality fiscal services to all our units, as well as loan management services for many grantees and borrowers, including homeowners, community-serving organizations, and developers. On the right, you can see a snapshot of our current fiscal year's funds and amounts that support our program and operations. I want to highlight a couple of things here. You can see our department's reliance on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the second line. That's comprised of the boomerang funds and impact fees that I mentioned earlier that we really plow into affordable housing projects as quickly as possible. As well, our department goes after and secures competitive funding from the state. You can see that in 2144, the California Housing and Community Development Fund. You know, this is really including a lot of the competitive state funds that we go after like Home Key, and we bring that in and grant those to our projects. Please note, this does not yet reflect Measure U, which has not yet been budgeted. Next slide. And lastly, the leadership team through administration. Our Admin Unit provides strategic direction, policy analysis, external relations, fiscal stewardship, and overall management of the department. We are the main points of contact with you on council, as well as other city staff and departments. We advance our policy priorities externally as well by establishing and maintaining partnership with folks like the Housing Authority, the county, the state, and our development partners and stakeholders. We manage data and communications for the department, and we oversee the department's racial equity team, which is comprised of 12 staff from all units in our agency that work to identify and eliminate racial disparities in our programs. Now, I'm going to pass it to Chris Norman, Assistant to the Director, who's going to provide us with an overview of HCD's key activities and performance. Thank you.
Next slide. So hello, everybody. As Christina mentioned, my name is Chris Norman, Assistant to the Director for the Housing Community Development Department. As a reminder, HCD's activities follow the three Ps of housing: production, protection, and preservation. This morning, I'll highlight a few of our key activities and performance metrics in these areas to give you a sense of our department's impact. Next slide. Next slide. So the map to the right depicts HCD-funded affordable housing production by location and type of project for the 2021 year. HCD invests millions of dollars into affordable housing each year through different funding pots, including new construction, rehabilitation, and acquisition and conversion to affordable housing. These projects can be seen throughout the city and will highlight some of them for you during our joint homelessness and housing presentation later. The image to the right was highlighted in our 2021 Impact Report and will soon be updating the data to reflect our 2022 figures. Next slide. So affordability in housing is defined by, through area median income, or AMI. The 2021 AMI in Alameda County for a family of four was around $125,600. That means half of households earn above that amount, and half of the households in the county earn below that amount. Affordable housing is broken down into different income categories, including extremely low income, or those making 30% or below of that AMI, very low income, low income, and moderate as well. The chart to the right shows that all of HCD's funded projects target deep affordability, which is much needed in the community. Deeply affordable units are more costly, and we rely on partnerships like that with the Oakland Housing Authority to keep them affordable ongoing through vouchers. Next slide. Through our Rent Adjustment Program, or RAP, Unit, HCD offers housing counseling services to the public to discuss housing issues and provide information, education, and referrals. The image to the right, also highlighted in our recent Impact Report, shows the five most common concerns our counselors reported through their contacts with the public. Some examples are rent increase concerns, the emergency moratorium on evictions, other eviction-related confirms like the Ellis Act, decreased housing services, something isn't working in your unit that should be, for example, and then concerns about RAP hearings for rent control. RAP housing counselors received an average of 434 contacts per month in fiscal year 2021, and they received an average of about 360 per month in fiscal year 2022. As a whole, for a whole year, they might have received somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 contacts, so they really are serving an education purpose for the community. Next slide. To address many of the housing concerns we hear, our RAP staff coordinate workshops to educate the public on housing policies and procedures. You can see a sample of the workshops we offer on the right. They include eviction moratorium overviews for both tenants and property owners, Fair Chance Ordinance for property owners, tenants' rights for students, security deposits, rent control and evictions in multiple languages, and more. We have several workshops planned for 2023, including a focus on the upcoming rental registry. We will share this information widely and publicly as it becomes available, as well as with each of your council offices. Next slide. Lastly, I'd like to highlight some of the work we complete around housing rehabilitation. HCD provides grants and loans to low-income and moderate-income property owners to improve their homes and meet access needs. 89% of projects approved in 2021 were for homeowners over the age of 62 years, and 84% of those projects approved were for extremely low or low-income homeowners. Again, populations that rely on safe and stable housing. This rehabilitation work that we do helps promote healthy and safe housing throughout Oakland, so it's a key part of our department's work. Next slide. Next, I will pass it to Emily Weinstein, Deputy Director of Community Development for HCD, to share some of our departmental priorities for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Oops, hold on one second. Like Chris said, my name is Emily Weinstein, Deputy Director of Community Development, and I am just going to run through some of the priorities that we have, HCD has, for 2023. Our first priority is to increase the financial resources for housing development and streamline housing development. To meet our RENA targets, Oakland must develop 26,000 housing units by 2031. Of these units, 10,000 are to be affordable to extremely low, very low, and low-income households. Oakland HCD assists in meeting this goal by funding the development of new construction units, as well as the acquisition of market-rate housing units and converting them to restricted affordable housing. Like most California cities, Oakland and its affordable housing development partners lack the capital and operating funds needed to reach our RENA goal. Oakland has no major source of local revenue dedicated exclusively to affordable housing, besides the jobs housing and affordable housing impact fees, which vary tremendously with the market and development climate, and does not provide operating subsidies which would allow us to target lower-income households. At this time, ongoing local investment in the construction of affordable housing in Oakland comes from development impact fees, reinvestment of program income largely from loan repayments, and federal block grants such as Home. It takes a lot to finance affordable housing. Typically, Oakland provides subsidy of approximately $150,000 per affordable unit and leverages other capital sources at an estimated total per unit cost of around $800,000 per unit. In order to target lower-income households, each unit also requires operating subsidy. The more operating subsidy we have, the more deeply affordable a unit can be for a household. Christina Moon will get more into the financing of affordable housing in the next presentation, so no need to capture all of this now. But the, one of the main priorities in this next year is to try to access additional resources, both capital and operating subsidies. And we all need council support to help advocate at the state and federal level for those resources, and with the county and housing authority for operating subsidies. Staff are actively working on this at the staff level, but council and mayoral leadership on this will be crucial. The good news is that in November 2022, Oakland voters approved Measure U, the Affordable Housing Infrastructure Bond. Of the total, oh, I'm sorry, I believe, next slide. The Affordable Housing Infrastructure Bond. Of the total 850 million approved, 350 million will go to affordable housing development over the next several years. Currently, HCD staff is working on a bond spending plan for these funds. It's rooted in the Strategic Action Plan that council approved in 2021, and staff is now embarking on a comprehensive stakeholder engagement effort to help determine spending priorities. We will be reaching out to council members and their staff in the next few weeks for more information and to explore outreach and engagement partnership opportunities. Additionally, the city is currently in the process of updating the general plan, housing and the housing element, including the general plan, including the housing element that will guide the city's strategy and tools over the next eight years. I see some hands up. Should we be responding, or should I continue with the? I'll continue.
Please continue.
Including the housing element that will guide the city's strategies and tools over the next eight years. Oakland HCD worked closely with PPD to propose strategies to streamline and prioritize the development of affordable housing, including the affordable housing overlay to allow affordable housing to be developed by right. The Planning and Building Department will bring the housing element to this council body later this month for adoption. Next slide. Addressing the homelessness crisis through prevention. As of early 2022, there are an estimated 5,055 unhoused individuals in Oakland, which is over half of the estimated total for larger Alameda County, closer to 10,000. In order to reduce the overall number of unhoused individuals in Oakland, the city must execute anti-displacement and protection strategies to reduce the flow of residents into homelessness. Historically, the city of Oakland has partnered with legal service providers to deliver eviction protection and tenant-right housing stability services, most recently in the form of the Oakland Housing Secure Program. In the wake of 2020's coronavirus pandemic, the city of Oakland elected to administer its own emergency rental assistance program, ERAP, as opposed to state administration, in order to better target and serve vulnerable residents. This COVID rental relief program targeted residents based on zip code, income level, past experience with homelessness, and other factors to reach those most at risk. Over $40 million in federal and state funds were made available to assist eligible renter households. As of 2022, Oakland HCD received over 11,000 unique applications for rental assistance with an average total assistance provided per household of $10,823. Most households assisted were Black, 45%, Latinx, 22%, and the top five zip codes served included 94601, 94605, 94621, 94606, and 94607. As seen on, oh, doing the next slide. No, this is the right one, sorry. As ERAP funds wind down, Oakland HCD began to develop a longer-term homelessness prevention strategy. Building on the lessons and learnings from previous initiatives, including Oakland Housing Secure, ERAP, and the philanthropic-supported initiative Keep Oakland Housed, Oakland HCD released a RFP for homeless prevention services in November 2022 to be awarded later this month, or early February. Through this RFP, Oakland HCD seeks to advance racial equity by removing barriers to long-term housing for Black, veteran, formerly incarcerated, and other Oakland residents most likely to experience homelessness. Oakland HCD released an RFP for homelessness prevention services in the amount of $2.3 million to address these root causes and provide stability for a portion of Oakland's most vulnerable residents. We are also partnering with Stanford's Changing Cities Research Lab to design and evaluate this approach with the potential to scale it in the future. Next slide. Our next priority is addressing the homelessness crisis through permanent exits. And some background, Oakland HCD administers three types of housing funds through its Notice of Funding Availability, our NOFA tool, the New Construction Program, the Acquisition and Conversion to Affordable Housing, or AKA program, and the Rehabilitation Program. While NOFA's are issued to invite the development of all affordable housing, a portion of each set of new construction funds, at least 20% of total units, but often more, is intended for extremely low-income units serving residents at or below 30% of AMI. Because these units require deeper city subsidy, as well as significant ongoing operating subsidy, Oakland HCD has historically partnered with the Oakland Housing Authority, OHA, to provide project-based Section 8 vouchers for city projects. OHA relies on the availability of funds through the federal Housing and Urban Development HUD Department, both for properties they own and operate, as well as those they support through the partnership with the city. Because HUD operating funds are unfortunately limited and scarce, Oakland HCD's ability to support and incentivize extremely low-income unit development, which often serves residents experiencing homelessness, referred through coordinated entry, is constrained by the availability of operating subsidy. Next slide. Producing, Oakland HCD has pursued creative solutions to new capital and operating subsidy sources for the creation of new, permanently supportive housing and extremely low-income units for people experiencing homelessness. In 2020 and 2021, we worked closely with HSD to leverage the city's Homeless Housing Assistance Program, or HAPF, funds to create 141 new units in Home Key acquisitions. We are also creating a local operating subsidy using the city's permanent local housing allocation from the state, which will support Home Key projects in 2023. We continue to work very closely with the Oakland Housing Authority to provide non-Section 8 operating funds for our new construction and Home Key projects. Home Key. While the region and state continues to struggle with the increased demand for permanent supportive housing, the city was an early leader, as Christina mentioned, in the state's efforts to create rapid housing solutions through the Home Key Program. For example, since 2020, the state of California has awarded the city approximately $56 million in competitive state Home Key funding to acquire, rehabilitate, and convert existing buildings, such as motels and the former CCA dormitory, into permanent supportive housing and ELI housing. Since late 2020, the city has invested in the creation of 253 extremely low-income and permanently supportive housing units under the Home Key Program. The third round RFP for the City of Oakland Home Key Funds was released in October 2022 in preparation for the release of the state's Home Key NOFA, which should be out this spring in 2023. Which brings me to the need for coordination. Despite these innovative and ambitious programs, the need remains daunting. A coordinated strategy of simultaneous investment in prevention, intervention, and permanent housing is critical in the city's response as outlined by the All-Home 1-2-4 Model, or the City's Own Path Plan. City leadership and agencies must continue to advocate and partner with the county, state, and federal governments for access to the necessary resources. Next slide. And our next priority, Priority Four, promote neighborhood and housing stability. Oakland tenants face housing instability in an environment where parties, both tenants and landlords alike, do not fully understand their rights and responsibility under existing city ordinances. This results in the spread of misinformation, illegal practices that are unaligned with city policy, and potential displacement. To address these challenges, HCD's Rent Adjustment Program, or RAP, is moving from a passive rent control model to an active model of enforcement. The Rent Registry is a big part of this effort. In June 2022, the Oakland City Council voted to approve the establishment of a rent registry in Oakland. The new law requires that owners of residential rental units subject to the rent program fee provide tenancy information for each covered unit on an annual basis. Rental property owners will be required to register their units with RAP for the first time by July 1, 2023. They will then be required to either update or confirm their unit's rental data annually. Owners who do not meet this new requirement will not be able to file petitions for rent increase or give rent increases, nor will they be able to answer tenants' petitions. All residential rental units subject to the rent program fee will need to be registered by the owner of the property. This includes units that are subject to the rent adjustment ordinance and/or units that are subject to the G-. and/or units that are subject to the Just Cause for Eviction Ordinance. RAP will host four additional workshops in January and February 2023 to aid property owners with the registration process. HCD and RAP staff will share dates for these upcoming workshops with council members and their staff as they become available. Also, in 2022, Oakland voters approved Measure B, Just Cause for Eviction Ordinance. This approval amended the previous Just Cause for Eviction Ordinance to prohibit no-fault evictions for children and educators during the school year, extend eviction protections to tenants in recreational vehicles, tiny homes on wheels, and newly constructed units of at least 10 years of age, remove failure to sign a new lease as grounds for eviction, and clarify other amendments. These efforts go a long way to help protect tenants in their units and prevent displacement. Next slide. Just to add, in order for the Just Cause and the Rental Registry to be successful, HCD has expanded its community engagement outreach and education effort. Through RAP's CEE team, we provide ongoing housing counseling, we run workshops, we provide resources, and we'll be expanding those efforts over the coming months. We also anticipate expanding the breadth and depth of this work as we work across HCD to increase the awareness of the Oakland community of all of the programs that HCD offers. On this slide. Oh, next slide. Is a way to access our HCD services. We have several ways, but our general housing assistance email and phone number is a one-way portal to all of the services that HCD offers. And with that, I will turn it over to Christina to conclude.
Thanks, Emily. Thank you, council members, for accepting this overview of HCD. There's so much more discussion to be had and to come in the next presentation and beyond, but I just want to say we're really eager to work with you all, to be your thought partners. Look to your leadership in establishing policy and vision for the city's housing work, and we're looking forward to continuing this conversation.